Good evening and welcome to our October meeting. Barb, can you call real please?
Mr. Beveridge.
Here.
Mr. Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Connell.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Mrs. Steele.
Here.
Mr. Wickliffe.
Here.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Here.
Will you please join me and welcome our Pioneer Middle School students to the front so we can stand for the pledge leaders. Heatherstone?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In my correction, those are students from Heatherstone and Manchester Park. Dr. McCall.
Well, good evening and thank you for attending tonight's Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel it is important that we review the importance of conducting productive and orderly meetings. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, we request that audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending and will now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you. Before we get into our agenda, I want to take a moment and offer an apology to our community, to our students, your families, our educators, our education support professionals, our staff here in the room. Last month, I would say there was a lack of decorum and inappropriate actions from our guests in the room as well. As the president of this board and the person that's tasked with presiding over this meeting, I believe that responsibility falls to me to make sure that we are conducting this meeting the way it should be. So to our staff in the building, in our room, I apologize for last month's actions and hopefully we can get our meeting going this month and have a better outcome. I do want to reiterate what Dr. McCallan just stated, and he says this, you know, it's been month after month, and I think oftentimes it's missed. And again, as the president of this board and the one that's tasked with presiding over this meeting, I want to make sure that everyone is clear. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. I take my responsibility very serious to preside over this meeting and we're going to make sure that today it's efficient and it's in order. So moving on to agenda item 2.01, I want to take a motion.
I'd move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wickliffe and a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe.
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero. All right, moving on to recognitions and awards. Aaron.
Good evening. As we move into awards and recognitions, I'd like to take a moment to welcome all of our distinguished guests. Tonight, we'd like to invite Heatherstone Elementary School Principal Toni Cole along with first grade teacher Nancy Smith up to the front. Heatherstone Elementary School was awarded the Civic Advocacy Network Award from the Kansas State Department of Education. Nancy Smith can be credited for her work and leadership with the Farm to Table Program and advocating for embedding agriculture standards in her extensive integrated unit plans. The schools that, the purpose of the Civic Advocacy Network is to recognize schools that actively involve students in civic engagement opportunities and to share exemplary practices with schools across the state. Nancy said, whether first graders are going to Topeka to lobby the State Board of Education to include agriculture in our state teaching standards, or we're inviting the Olathe Police and Fire Departments to come to our school to share their programs, the Heatherstone staff is committed to helping our students become involved in their community. I am so proud to be part of the Heatherstone team that works hard at providing opportunities for our students to learn about their world. Congratulations to Toni, Nancy, and the entire Heatherstone Elementary staff. Dr. Smith. Next, we'd like to invite Rachel Swerengen of Manchester Park Elementary School to the front along with her principal Jenny Steele. Earlier this semester, Rachel was named the Kansas History Teacher of the Year by the Gilder Lehman Institute of American History, which is an amazing achievement by itself. But more recently, she was announced as one of ten finalists for the 2023 National History Teacher of the Year Award. This award was implemented to highlight the crucial importance of history education by honoring exceptional American history teachers from elementary through high school. Rachel said, "History is a subject that is vital to helping students build a foundation of what it means to be a productive citizen in a democratic society. I want to continue to spread that message." Please join me in congratulating Rachel Swerengen on this amazing accomplishment. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
All right, we have two presentations tonight. Up first is the fantastic principal at Pioneer Trail, Mr. Appel.
Setting the bar pretty high there, Mr. Boyd.
They could be my bias coming out.
A little biased, I think a couple of you might be biased on the board up there, but I appreciate it. Thank you, board, thank you superintendent leadership team for allowing us to come up here and brag about the things that are going on at Pioneer Trail, not only this year, but the last couple of years as well as what we got going on in the future. Also want to make sure I recognize our two amazing assistant principals, Mrs. Ashley Olrich and Mrs. Katie Olvera in the back of the room. They're instrumental to the success in everything we do on the day to day. So first, just want to kind of paint a picture of what we look like at Pioneer Trail. You can see in the graph in the bottom right, our culture and ethnic breakdown of our student body. This is what you'd see when you walk through our hallways. We have a great mixture of diversity and different backgrounds that we have in our building. You can also see on the left, we have, we already have welcomed 20 new students to our building this school year, so that's about two or three new students every week. And out of those 20 students, eight of those students are from outside the country. So their first American public education experience is at Pioneer Trail Middle School, which is something that we really love, and it's a unique opportunity that we get at Pioneer Trail. You can also see that just over 10% of our students were born outside of the United States. We have over 100 students who are English language learners, so their primary language isn't English. And we also have 20 different languages spoken in the homes of our students, which is a really cool thing when you think about it. You know, we have this wealth of experiences, backgrounds, and cultures, it's something that we really get to embrace as a staff. I also want to take a second to brag on our staff at Pioneer Trail. They have a collective efficacy like a building I've never been in before. They collaborate to do what is best for kids academically, socially, emotionally, mentally, to ensure that our kids are set up for success every day. And our staff is also a really good balance and a perfect mixture of staff who are in various stages of their career, and so we have a really good camaraderie, so we know when to have a good time, we know when to have fun, but we also know when it's time to roll up our sleeves and get the job done. And I know that with certainty that if we have to make a decision, the decision's going to be made with the best interests of our students in mind and not with the adults in mind. So we're going to focus tonight on our building mission statement, which is also the framework of our PBIS, which is also our PBIS framework, and that is we are accountable, we are respectful, we are engaged, we are PT. We felt as a staff a couple of years ago when we voted on our mission statement that these were characteristics of not only successful students at Pioneer Trail or within the Olathe Public School system, but also of successful post-graduates. And we're going to take a few minutes on each slide to kind of show and embody what it looks like every day at Pioneer Trail with our staff and students. So our first one's accountability or being accountable. We use our data to make the decisions that we make in our building daily. So we're using our Kansas assessment data to set those building-wide goals and to celebrate the success that we have in our daily instruction. So one of our successes this year was we were one of the highest year-over-year, had one of the highest year-over-year growths in our math scores in the district among the 10 middle schools, which is something that we celebrated pretty heavily, and that goes back to the collective efficacy of our staff. What a lot of people don't know is that our staff, every single staff member is involved in developing a math lesson that is then given on Math Thursdays, we call it, during intervention time. And so every single staff member has a hand in that success that we've seen in math, and we're hoping to couple that up this year with reading. We also use our FastBridge data to look at who, what students we need to intervene with. So that intervention could be students that we need to fill some gaps with, or some students that we need to extend their learning to make sure they're being appropriately challenged in our building. Then our staff is using our common form and assessments during PLCs just to make sure that if we're mid-unit and we have students who maybe aren't hitting our targets, that we're intervening, that we're working with them in small groups or individually to make sure that they're going to be on target when we do have that end-of-unit assessment. We also, as a staff, chose three high-impact strategies that you can see up there on the presentation. We chose those because we felt that those would build an excitement for learning because of these strategies. And so our students are more excited to come to class, they're hearing some common language, they're seeing some really fun things, and we're activating that prior knowledge that we really need with the diversity that we have in our building and the languages that are spoken in our building. Which also leads to an appropriately challenged academic, appropriately challenging academic structure and procedures for our kids, and that has increased our academic rigor. And so because we're challenging students appropriately, we've seen an increase in that work completion, which has in turn seen an increase in student scores. The next one's respectful. So in our building, when we have such a richness in beliefs, perspectives, it's imperative that we respect and understand one another and everybody's background. Our staff and students have gone above and beyond to develop a culture of inclusion and belonging, so much so that when you walk into our building and one of our 20 new students is in there, you wouldn't know if that student has been in our building for two days, two months, or two years. Our students and our staff take everyone in like they're their own, and they make them feel connected immediately, and they're going their own way. One thing that we like to talk about when we're at lunch, the administrators and the rest of our staff, is we never see a student sitting by themselves, not by choice. And so the only time we see students sitting by themselves is by their own choice. If they just need a break and a relaxation time, they can have it, they can be away from people for a few minutes. One of the big things we also have seen with our PBS program is that increase in consistency and our follow-through and buy-in and the common language that we're speaking throughout the building in terms of the expectations that we have with our kids. So whenever we have something going on, it's the same thing they're going to hear in the commons, that they're going to hear in the lunchroom, that they're going to hear in the classroom, that they're going to hear in the hallway. It's consistent, and there's follow-through, and we go with it. Because we have that consistency and buy-in and that common language, we've seen an increase in students following those expectations, which has also led to a decrease in disciplinary referrals. And lastly is that student engagement, probably one of the biggest ones and most important ones for us as a building. We have staff who are working tirelessly to develop highly engaging material, which creates an academic buzz in our classrooms. Students are talking the academic language, they're on task, they're working through projects or work that is meaningful and relevant to them, which has in turn increased our work completion and increased student scores. When we get together and we talk about these as an administrative staff, it's so special to be able to talk and brag about our team and always invite you guys to come see that as well, and some of you have had the experience to be able to see what we're talking about. We've also seen an increase in the involvement in our extracurricular activities. So from our after-school clubs, from our Student Diversity Advisory Council, to our Student Council, to our green team, which keeps up our garden in the backyard of Pioneer Trail, to our athletes, to our fine arts musicians, and our theater, which we have a play dropping tomorrow night at 7:00 PM if anyone wants to come. You're more than welcome to show up and see that. And so with that increase in student buy-in, we've seen an increase in that school spirit, which just creates this special buzz within our building. One of my biggest goals for myself every year is just to increase the community engagement. This is my second year as building principal, and I'll be honest, last year, when I started our parent organization, I had two parents. So a little bit of, a little humble pie I got to eat when we had that one show up. I am very happy to announce that we have a recent parent meeting on, just on Wednesday night, and we tripled our attendance. And so we're making small incremental growth, but at the end of the day, our parents and families are still supporting our kids even if they're not coming to the meetings. They're following through with emails, they're bringing things in to support our students and staff, and at the end of the day, that's what we needed to see. And then we also, part of our community engagement, are mentor students that go to Countryside once a month. So we have an AIM program, which is kind of the precursor to Avid. We have students who go over every month, and they mentor students at Countryside Elementary, and there's a picture there of one of our students who was able to go over there. The other week, they play Uno, they're reading with them, they're doing math facts. These two individuals are working on sentence structure, and it was just so much fun to see not only the joy on the elementary students' faces, but also on our eighth graders' faces when we walked out the doors and they were talking about how much fun they had teaching and learning. And so gives us hope as administrators, as we're hiring, there's people that do want to be teachers, and so we just got to keep feeding that buzz. We're going to wrap things up here with a little short video. And so we have a special guest who comes and visits our building about two or three times a quarter, and her name is Agent R. Agent R is always on the lookout for students who are being accountable, respectful, and engaged. What's amazing is when Agent R and her camera crew show up, is there's just a special buzz in the building where kids are excited to be interviewed and want to be a part of it, and they want to see themselves on the video when we show it during intervention time the following day. What the kids don't know is we're actually tricking them into speaking the language that we want to hear. And you guys will get to see that here on display. And this is, our students haven't seen this one yet, it's being pushed out here in a couple of days or here at the end of the week, and I am not at liberty to tell you if the Agent R is Mrs. Olvera and the camera crew is Mrs. Olrich.
Good morning, this is Agent R. Remember, R stands for accountable, respectful, and engaged, and I'm back for year two to see what these awesome PT Panthers are doing, and let me tell you, you are in for a treat. Hey, could you tell me what are our school expectations?
Accountable, respectful, engaged. We are PT!
I'm here today to talk with this table about what are some things you do that are accountable at lunch?
Um, I get the yellow rag when it's time to clean up.
We clean up after ourselves, love it.
Keep the volume in the lunchroom down.
Ah, we don't want it to get too loud in here. What are some other things we do to be accountable?
Uh, you throw your trash away.
Throw it away when we're done.
Sweep when we spill.
Yeah, we've got brooms all over the place, we clean up our messes, don't we? All right, thank you so much, thanks for being accountable. Agent R here, and I'm excited to talk to Leila about how she is respectful in the hallway.
I keep walking and I keep traffic moving, I don't stop.
Love that, she keeps traffic moving through our hallways. I'm here today to talk to our friend Jake. Jake, what are some things you do to be respectful in the hallways?
I use quiet conversations and I get to class and try not to start.
That is wonderful, quiet conversations, and he was hard to be on time, thank you so much, Jake. Hi, this is Agent R back at Pioneer Trail, and today, guys, I'm just so inspired by the engagement that I see. I have Kate Howard right here, Kate. Kate! You're hearing about why engagement is so important?
Yes.
There you go, there's your super important microphone. Why do you think engagement matters?
I think it matters because it's showing respect to the players on the court and like making sure that you are like paying attention and like showing them that you care.
Wow, do you think these players put in a lot of practice outside of this?
Yes, every single day they have practice in games, so.
Wow, have you ever been a player in a game?
Yes.
Oh, do you appreciate it when the crowd is engaged?
Yeah, it makes it more fun and it just makes them feel like you guys are all like together.
Hey Panthers, what are their school expectations?
We are accountable, respectful, and engaged! We are PT!
So again, just, it creates a lot of fun, and I think a couple of special cameos in there from a few members of, maybe some family members of the board. And so just it's special to see that and see our kids, how excited they get to talk about Pioneer Trail and our mission statement and what it's all about. And it just, yeah, if you ever want to come be on video, you're welcome to reach out to Agent R, or Mrs. Olvera might have a special connection to Agent R as well. And so that kind of wraps everything up, oh, I'm not playing that again. Wraps everything up, and you guys are always welcome to come join us at Pioneer Trail to catch our kids being accountable, respectful, and engaged, so thank you guys for the opportunity.
Boyd, are there any questions of Mr. Appel? See, the bar wasn't set too high for you, you did good.
Good. All right, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Moving to 4.02, we have a special education update.
You know, we should have planned that better, it would have been fun to have Agent R interview us and have some live action for you guys, but instead you just get some amazing folks out of the Special Education Department here this evening, and we're excited to share with you. This evening with me, I am joined by Lori Diaz. She is a resource consultative teacher, and I know that's kind of a lot of words, so I'm going to describe what she actually does for you. She's a former resource teacher in our district, and now her role is to go out and support resource teachers, elementary through high school, and provide them ideas and think about individual ways to meet student needs in the resource setting. So she helps support curriculum and different types of plans and strategies that we put in place for teachers. And then the other two wonderful ladies that I have standing next to Lori are Summer Cowick and Tracy Russman. And these ladies are going to talk to you about another area of special education with our gifted program kind of later in the position, in the program. So in order to get started, I think it's important that we all have a basic foundation and understanding for what special education really is. And when we say special education, we mean specially designed instruction. And to take that one step further, specially designed instruction is simply a way of adapting content, methodology, or delivery of instruction to meet unique needs. And the thing that really needs to be pointed out here is that the goal is to ensure access to the general education curriculum in order to meet educational standards that apply to all students who enter our schools. We point out that if students' needs can be met in a general education setting with accommodations and modifications, we oftentimes see those students supported by other plans, like 504 plans. So I think it's important to really kind of know what it means and that just because you need accommodations or modifications doesn't necessarily mean that you need specially designed instruction. And now to talk about eligibility for special education, I think you often hear the two-pronged factor, and that is highlighted on this slide for you. There is, generally it starts with an evaluation and a team, and the team who is part of that child's planning group includes the parents and the professionals that have completed the evaluation. When a student meets the federal and state criteria as having an exceptionality, and that second prong is met for needing specially designed instruction, that are, those are the two areas where a student then would become eligible for receiving special education. So you may remember last fall, our district administration team worked with an external consultant to have a study completed on special services. And I wanted to highlight for you kind of the purpose, some of the main focuses that we had in that study, and then talk about the action steps that we will be doing and continue to do as we move forward. The purpose of that study was to just really look across the board at special education. And what we found from that study was then going to guide our leadership team in making decisions, and that's what we've used that study for. So we focused on two areas. The first was our continuum of service delivery, and I'm going to talk specifically about what that entails here later in the presentation, and then staffing. And we focused heavily on classified, but then also began looking into certified as well. So when you think about staffing and continuum, we're looking specifically at Olathe School District, and we're thinking about the number of students that we serve, the types of needs that those students have, and are we able to appropriately serve them in our continuum with the right amount of support? And as just a quick reminder, I wanted to highlight the amount of personnel involved. Our, the lady who completed the study was able to speak personally with 105 personnel across our district, and in those, with those, the personnel that was representative of 11 schools. And so they were from different feeder patterns, we made sure that we tried to cast that net as high and wide as possible. And so now is the fun part, let's talk about the findings and some of the action steps. I love to start with the fact that she is celebrating us as a healthy entity in special services, and that more importantly, she found that our continuum was robust and well within the framework that is considered to be acceptable to meet student needs who have disabilities. Some additional findings, that a few of these might have come just as how high they ranked a little bit of a surprise, but I don't think that anything that you see up here on the screen was a surprise to us. And the first one was vocabulary and unintentional consequences. And just really to kind of explain that a little further, what she found is that staff were reporting that when she spoke to them on an individual basis, there are students that are demonstrating dysregulation and the inability to control behaviors, control their own words, things like that. And when teachers are speaking to other teachers, they tend to say, you know Johnny, the one that has the behavior, or Johnny did this, or Johnny did that. And by the way, I need to tell you Johnny, I don't know who Johnny is, but he's a dear friend of mine and I use his name frequently, so. Anyhow, the goal there was just to really bring to attention and highlight that the more often you use negative language trying to describe a person, the more often that becomes real. And what her caution was, you know, if you continue to say behave your student, or behave your kiddo, or behave your challenges, that eventually... that eventually, right or wrong, that student has a label with behavior attached to him. The second area was classified staff shortage impact. I know that's not a surprise to any of you sitting up here, nor the folks in the community or our teachers. And so, that did come out in the study, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Certified sped staff not receiving lunch in planned time. This, this was pretty evident and something that we began working on last year, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here soon too. Inclusion awareness for all educational teams. So just making sure that everybody in the school community truly understands least restrictive environment and inclusive practices. She reassured us that Olathe has a very strong commitment around MTSS and PBIS, and she would love to see that continue, and I think we would all agree with her. And then finally, continue our practices around recruitment and retention to help with some of the shortages that we're seeing. So, action steps, we have about five of these, and I'm going to start with just the first piece of wanting to communicate this. Although the study really wasn't done for the community, our goal was to share what was found. And so, we received this information in late January and immediately began sharing with you all as board members. One of our administrative staff meetings following this information, we took quite a bit of time to talk with our principals around the things that we found in the study. All of our Olathe employees were provided a copy. And throughout the process of the study being completed, we updated, updated them. So at the beginning, we shared kind of what was going to be taking place with the study, who might be involved directly with the study. And then as the study went on, we continued to communicate that all in our weekly newsletter called In the Know. And then District Site Council, fortunate enough to offer a session where community could join us in the spring and, and learn about the study there. And then our Special Services Site Council, and finally, before our resource teachers went off contract for the summer, we had the opportunity to share directly with them. Action item number two, lunch in plan. This is a topic that we had heard and the, the study highlighted it further for us. And I'm just going to kind of explain what happens. When you are a resource teacher or a teacher in a special program, oftentimes your students are seeing you for needs that relate to behavior or dysregulation or social emotional concerns. And so what happens is, as a teacher, and I'm sure the ladies right here behind me can, can agree, that if you have a student who you support and you case manage and there's dysregulation, you feel this obligation and immediate need to go and help and support, even if there might be other ways to manage that. And so, I think what we wanted to do was be able to make everyone aware that we knew and we heard that this is what was happening. And, and when I, I'm not trying to over generalize, but I think I'm trying to, to make it a point where we knew it was happening in a variety of settings, primarily in our elementary world. And so, one of the first things that we did then was work with professional counsel. And the PNA now has new wording that has been revised, that includes special education when planned time is missed. And so, our goal this, this fall has been to meet with building administrators and communicate out what the process is and how they're an integral part of helping us support and provide solutions. And that if indeed that time is missed, then there is compensation available for those individuals if we can't work that out. So we're excited about that and hopeful that that provides some, some help moving forward to our special educators. Action number three was around the staffing portion of the study. As I mentioned early on, this was kind of a heavy focus, based on the number of students that we have with disabilities and the types of needs that we see. Are we allocating staff appropriately when we think about teachers and we also think about paraprofessionals? And what we learned is that even though we took a representation of five years so that we weren't just looking at COVID, the years post-COVID, we took data from before COVID, was that we had this increase in students that are eligible for special education, and we have become, we had become more discrepant in that. And so, as an action step, we increased our certified staffing positions. And if you combine those numbers for what we posted and hired for in the spring, and then what we posted for and hired this fall, we have over 20 certified new FTE positions in special education this year. And then our classified allocation has also increased as student numbers, depending on what the teacher-to-student ratio is and how those allocations are. The thing that I would highlight, and I think most people understand, is that even though we've increased our classified allocations, we still have a large number of openings in that area or positions that have not actually been filled. Number four is professional learning. And so, some of those things that I just talked to you about, about vocabulary and understanding inclusion and least restrictive environment, this is something that is a portion of our professional learning this entire year. You'll see that we had summer listening sessions, and those were optional sessions for special education staff to join us and share their thoughts, and we kind of carved our questions to make it where they had direct feedback on the results of the study and kind of steps moving forward. And then in August, we were able to spend time with our 500-plus certified staff and our 750 paraprofessionals talking about some of these things. And then we have two upcoming dates that we'll be working with staff. And one of those, the one in January, will actually include all certified staff. So, a lot of times we just get our chance to, to have conversations with our special education staff, and this is going to be something that we're excited to be able to carry across the continuum through our general education colleagues as well. And finally, the fifth thing that we're doing is trying to share in community information sessions where we talk about inclusion and we talk about what happens when inclusion is working. And we had that opportunity at the Fall District Site Council. And then, just recently did a Special Services Site Council where we partnered with an advocacy group and just simply talked about how well it works if we have the opportunity to partner with advocates and work to support students in their least restrictive environment and in their schools. So with that, I've used least restrictive environment a lot, and I want to now the focus on kind of what we do with least restrictive environment, how we try to maintain least restrictive environment, and how to define it. So first, when we think about least restrictive environment, what we're trying to do is support students in a fashion that's most closely aligned with their same-age peers. Provide them opportunities to engage in the same type of learning experiences as, that, with peers that do not have a disability. And when we think about what that looks like, it's, it goes back to that IEP team, and it goes back to discussions and data that support and drive the actions of determining where that least restrictive environment is. So it's important to remember that least restrictive environment varies for the individual, and it's based on those needs that our teams have identified and sitting, or, and are sitting down and having conversations about. And then we often hear inclusion as kind of a related term with least restrictive environment. And I wanted to try and clear that up and how important the two are together. But inclusion is a belief system. And I know when we just heard the Pioneer Trail presentation, he talked about inclusion and, and what it means to their school and how every individual understands what inclusive and respect looks like. And when we say inclusion, we talk about students that are getting services, and they're getting those services brought into their general education environment, or with other peers that do not have disabilities. That is a general vague description for you about how inclusion works. And so, we talk about the fact that if you're able to accomplish that, you have, it's critical to a school's success, as you just saw with, with Pioneer Trail's vision, so. This is probably my favorite slide in the, in the slideshow. And I think what it does is it visually allows you to see how extensive the continuum of services for students with disabilities are. What I would highlight is that on the left side of your screen, you see our kind of least restrictive environments that all include pieces and portions of the general education setting. And then on the right hand of your screen, you see as the arrow moves up, how the environment gets more extr, more restrictive, and essentially where they are, students are less, are less exposed to their same-age peers without disabilities. But what I want to highlight here is that the first five boxes include general education. It is so important to us that that's the area where we believe we can meet 98% of our students, right there. It is such a small portion of our students who require more restrictive environments. And, you know, we have those and we have very successful programs, but it's important to highlight here what it looks like for students and how much we can do in a least restrictive environment to support them. So moving along, we're going to talk to you about how we accomplish that on that lower end of the continuum in those first five boxes. And to do that, I'm going to have Lori Diaz speak with you.
So, one way we support students in their LRE is through accommodations and modifications. Oftentimes, we use these words interchangeably, and they're actually quite different. So an easy way to think about it is on the slide, you can see on the left, it's an accommodation, on the right, it's a modification. Accommodations level the playing field. Everybody's doing the same thing, just with some changes to it. And then modifications actually change everything about the playing field. So, they may be working at a different grade level or on different skills that they're not working on in class. We may look at back mapping standards so that we're reaching them where they are. And when looking at accommodations and modifications, we need to remember that it's for each individual student. Everyone can look differently in both gen ed and in special education setting. So there's different types of accommodations, and I'm going to highlight a few of those. So we have visual supports, and these, I'm going to highlight a couple of them, but there's a list, this is a small list, there's many more. But the first one is a visual that's on somebody's desk. And in the lower right corner, you might see the happy face and the, kind of the, the really happy face, and then the straight face. And that's for a kiddo, just for a reminder of what his goals are, for reminding him of what his behavior should look like in the classroom. At the top right corner is a picture, and it's very tiny, so you can't really see it, but it's a visual of somebody breathing. And so that's what we teach a lot of our students, is when you're starting to feel upset, or you're starting to, you know, you're dysregulating, to stop and take those breaths. So that's really important for us to teach the kids to do those things, and just having that visual reminder, a teacher can just walk by and tap it, and that's just another way to remind them. Excuse me. The one in the middle is a visual schedule, and this is probably one that's used the most. You can use this in different ways. The way that it's up on the board is each different subject or different transition is listed. And when the kids are done with it, they take it off and put it away, and they know that that's over. Something else we use is called a first then. So, it may be as simple as first we work, then you get a break. First we work, then you get a snack. First we work, then you get to go outside. So that's a really good one to use when our kids, when that, the purple one is too overwhelming and they just need something a little bit simplified. The third one is expected behavior. So this can be used with all students in the classroom. It's just a reminder on what our commitments are for our, our class. So our hands are down, our body is safe, we have a quiet mouth. So that's just something that the teachers can use. I was in a building today that all of the paras and the teachers had on their, they had little icons of the, those things. And so, they could just show it, if they're in the hallway, they just pull it out and they show it, remember we have a quiet mouth in the hallway. So those are just simple things that all kids can benefit from. Then we look at sensory supports. We have sensory rooms in most of our buildings that all students can have access to. There are sensory items that can be in the sensory room, they can go to the special education classroom, they can be in the gen ed classroom, they can be in the lunchroom, they can go anywhere the kids go. So in the top picture, there are some headphones. Lots of kids use headphones when they're in the hallways and it's loud and they're getting overstimulated because it is so loud, it's overwhelming to them. We can also use, on the right of that picture is a weighted blanket. So sometimes, when I had a classroom, I had a weighted blanket, and kids would just come in and they would throw it on themselves because they needed that deep pressure. The bottom picture has two baskets, and one of the baskets are fidgets, so just things, I need something right now to keep my hands busy. So they, they can go and grab something if they needed, if a teacher sees that somebody's needing something, they can go and grab, if they know what their favorite one is or something that they need, they could do that. And then the reddish colored disc looking thing is called a wiggle seat. So lots of kids could get that sensory input from sitting on it and just kind of moving back and forth. And it doesn't make them stand out anymore. Lots of kids use them. When I worked at an elementary school, I would have kids come in my room that were gen ed students only, and they would come in, hey, can I borrow that thing? And I'm like, sure. So, it's beneficial for all kids. Another piece that's sensory is, the picture on the left is of a student who's using what we call a sensory walk. So, in 2019, I wrote a grant for all 36 elementary schools to receive a sensory walk in their buildings. It was super exciting, everybody was on board with it and so excited that they could use this. I've been in many buildings where they've extended onto this one, or they've gone and bought more and put them in different hallways so kids can access it in different places of the building. And the picture in the middle is a visual support, and it's just, so you can see the pink tape on the table, and that's so kids know, this is my workspace. That's Johnny's workspace, and maybe this is Suzie's workspace. So just to know, these are my boundaries, this is where I'm supposed to be. And then the third picture is another visual support, and it just has masking tape on the floor so that kids can understand that this is where you're supposed to be working, and this is your area. We also have environmental supports. So, another, this could be preferential seating. So maybe you have a student that needs to sit closer to the teacher's desk, or is closer to the board, or away from the door, because we have a lot of children that are low. So if you can put them away from the door, that's going to give them some obstacles to get around before they can get out. Also, the picture shows a little guy that, he's still part of the group, he just struggles to sit on the floor with all the other kids. So they have a special chair that's his, if he can sit there, or he can try to sit on the carpet if he wants to, it's his choice and he knows that. But you might notice on the back of his chair is a weighted blanket. And he takes that with him, and if he needs to use it, he throws it on, and nobody thinks anything else about it because they all know that that's something that he needs. And then teacher proximity is just, you know, teachers walking by if we see students starting to get unregulated or just maybe needing that person closer to them. So it's just somebody going over and maybe just getting close, if you know your student well enough, like patting their back or just pointing to something on the desk to get them back engaged in what was going on. So, one of our biggest goals is to have students always in their least restrictive environment and have them be able to have access to the gen ed, to, access to general education as possible. I had the opportunity to follow up with a student, I've been in this position for five years now. I had a student that, when he was in eighth grade, I got called in, kind of worked with the team, worked through some strategies that we could use with him. And I got to go to his school, he's now a senior, and he will be graduating in May, which is super exciting. With the supports that have been put in place for him, he's been very successful in high school. The, he's made both huge gains in both academically and socially. And the next few slides, I'm going to talk about him just a little bit. So this is one of the things that he uses. When receiving instruction, he likes to use this quiet space. So inside of the resource room, there's a little office. He's claimed it as his own, like, everybody knows that's where he goes. And it's also, one of his modifications and accommodations on his IEP is he has an alternate space for his locker. He needs something bigger than a locker, and he can't carry everything. He needs something bigger than a locker, and he can't carry everything around all day, so this is also his locker. He takes all of his things and puts them in there and gets them when he needs them. This is used when he just needs that quieter space. And he likes to go in there because it's big enough that he can do things and get his work done in a quiet area. So I talked about visuals a little bit ago, and this is one of them that, in a high school building, they do a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and Friday check. And I talked to one of the students in this class, and he said, this really helps me because if I, I don't have to worry about it, because I know what's coming up. And if something changes, my teacher changes it, and then I know ahead of time, and it doesn't get me worked up, and I don't get anxious. And I think it helps a lot of the kids, several of them mentioned that, so I thought that was really awesome. And then these are for alternate passing and triage. So this is something that he uses, and for alternate passing, he is allowed to leave the gen ed classroom two to three minutes, two to four minutes early to get to the next destination, if he needs it. Everybody knows if he hands it to them, that's what it's used for. He doesn't even use it very much anymore, because he's much more comfortable walking in the hallways. The back of his also says triage, and this can be used at any time during the day if he's feeling like he just needs to go check in with his trusted adult, which is his resource teacher. He can go and check in with him if he's feeling tired, or if he's feeling hungry, he just goes and checks in, and the teacher's like, here, I've got some goldfish, or, you know, he helps meet that need. The bottom one is because all kids don't need alternate passing, so the white pass is just for triage. So if a student needs that piece, then they have it available. For transition supports, same student, he has this at the beginning of the year, it says, in the first column, it says what the hour is, the second column says the hour he's going to, and the third column tells him which teacher is helping him to transition from first hour to second hour. He used that for the first two weeks, and then he doesn't need it anymore, which is fantastic, because a lot of our kids, fading those supports is so important, so he's preparing for himself after graduation. So I followed him around one morning, and I asked him beforehand, I said, are you okay with it if you show me how you get to class? And he was like, yeah, that's fine. So I followed him to one of his classes to begin with, and it was a computer class. And so he got in there and he said, okay, but you can't look at my password, turn your head. He's like, okay. So turned my head, I assured him I was not peeking at his password. But he's been very successful. He used to have to wear headphones in the hallways, and he no longer does that. He also has a job at his school, so he clocks in and out. I asked him if it was okay if I took a video. We reached out to his mom to get permission, and she said she was totally fine with it. I asked him if it was okay, and he said, it's going to help other teachers, yes. So here is just a short clip. Nope. I figured you're, you're well on your way.
Okay.
So when looking at SEL and social emotional, social emotional, we have some supports for all buildings that is curriculum based for our teachers to use. So we use the Zones of Regulation in elementary and secondary. Superflex is also elementary and secondary. The bottom one on the left is We Thinkers, and it's a new one that we purchased last year, and it is for elementary. And then the one on the right, the five is Against the Law, that is a secondary one that we use with our secondary students. And we also have a subscription to Everyday Speech, and it's just teaching kids social skills, but it's online, and it has different lessons for different things. So if you're needing something specific, you can go in and search for that, and it's usually there, and it gives like video modeling, so that's helpful, too. This is one of our, a different student, and we're always working towards student independence. An example of this is always fading back supports when we can't. So this student, when he was in kindergarten and first grade at one of our elementary schools, he needed a behavior plan, he needed a whole class and individual visual schedules, and they reviewed those every day. He needed access to a sensory support from the OT. I'm just going to highlight a few of them. He had a daily triage, check in, check out, they used the We Thinkers, and planning for changes, because change was hard for him, and they knew that. So now that he's a second grader, they've been able to reduce his resource time from 30 minutes by five every day to 30 minutes by four, that was last year. This year, they're able to reduce it from 30 times four to 30 minutes a day of pullout to three times. He also had full day support in the classroom from different adults in the building. They're also able to fade that out now, not completely, but they're fading back. And also, the data is showing that the team is also considering dismissing his behavior plan because he's made so much progress.
So this slide kind of wraps all of this up by sharing a direct application that one of our peer models, who was leaving eighth grade to apply for IPS classroom and to be a part of that in high school, sent in on his application. And the question was, what opportunities have you had to support young adults with disabilities or peers with disabilities, and why do you want to do this? And I'm going to read what he wrote and leave you with that when we think about our continuum and least restrictive environment and why it is so important. "I have attended both elementary and middle schools in Olatha Public Schools, and I have had many direct and indirect interactions with students having disabilities. In addition, a nurse who works with students who have intellectual abilities and autism. Because of this, I have had opportunities to interact with and go to events and support students in special programs." I missed a very important word in there, the student's mom is a nurse, in case you're confused about that. "One of these events includes a baseball game we went to at Miracle Field because of my mom's student. I also had the opportunity to participate with another one of my mom's students in the Special Olympics Combine Draft Event, where we were able to do football drills with him and his friends. The same student also enjoys playing catch, so we have been able to come to his house and do other events with him in his home. It's cool how much students who have little to no verbal communication ability can teach me and impact me. They make me so happy. I have heard my mom say about many of her students, they are everything I never knew I needed. She's right, and I'm honored to learn and be friends with these individuals. I hope to make more connections like this through this program." With that, we're going to move over to the other side of special services and what we call gifted, and I'm going to bring up Tracy and Summer for that portion.
So thank you all for having us here today. I'm fortunate, I, when I first started teaching, I worked on the resource side of things. It was a tremendous experience, and one that I would never trade for anything. Conversely, now that I'm on the gifted end of things, it's such an incredible experience to get to work with our students who have so much incredible intelligence, gifts, talents, and likewise. Gifted means that these students are performing or demonstrating the potential for performance at significantly higher levels of accomplishment than their peers in one or more academic fields, intellectual ability, creative and talented area, when compared to others of similar age, experience, and environment. And sometimes giftedness is heavy on one end, and not as much on the other. And it tends to be something that is sometimes invisible. Teachers and peers sometimes think that a gifted kid is the one in class that's like, pick me, pick me, I know, I know. And that's really oftentimes not the case. Sometimes gifted kids are great big pains. They will challenge the teacher, they'll ask questions, they'll say, why? Well, that doesn't make any sense at all. And it's fabulous, it's a great, you know, teachable moment for teachers, for students, for peers, and the like. And Summer and I had the incredible opportunity to put together what we're going to share with you now, which is a gifted Olympiad. And the idea was that we wanted to create more mentorship, a bigger conversation, a better understanding of what gifted identities were at the elementary school, at the middle school, and at the high school. And this, this event has, I, we learned a lot from it as well.
I just want to point out the quote, though. Like, I struggle being quiet and still and not fight, so I'm just going to apologize right out of the gate. But can we just take a moment and observe the quest is the best, gosh dang it, I've ever. And I'm so glad I'm in it, and I hope this continues for many more years. That's not even my quote, I don't know who said it, but gosh dang it, I like it.
We like fight over which one of our kids said that, I think it's mine. So, so this, this event began a few years ago, and our whole objective was to develop these mentor relationships, to enhance our vertical alignment in the schools, and to provide opportunities for these gifted kiddos to interact with like kiddos. You know, give them a chance to practice social skills and to get to show off a little bit, you know, in a safe environment, in a supportive environment, and provide, our whole goal was that we took Howard Gardner's multiple intelligences, and we had our high school students work to create events that met those intelligences, so that when the kids came, they're practicing their brains, they're practicing their body aesthetics, they're practicing, well, we're adding music and creativity this year. And it's an opportunity, I happen to work with student council at my school, I may or may not have roped them in to helping us with some of the events, and they love it and have adopted it as a project that they want to do every year.
So this year, we are lucky enough that every school is going to participate. The first year, we only had four schools, it was just kind of a last minute thing, it was post-COVID, we were still masking, we didn't know what the heck was going on, right? So we got the go-ahead in February, if you want to do this, go ahead, and we were like, okay. And we were able to pull it off that first week of April with four schools. Last year, we had eight schools, and this year, all of our schools are going to participate. We literally just had our last one commit today, so that mission trailer should be a number 19 there, she'll be bringing 19 kids to the Olympics. So we also have kids that have graduated out of the middle school situation, and now they're in the high schools, and they're on a mailing list because they're like, we will miss school to come help with the Olympics. And I said, maybe we can get e-hours here, something, a couple of them are future educators, so that works out well. We have kids who are in the, what's it called, ECOM, that are creating our registration forms so we know which kids are going to compete in which activity, where they're going to be, when they're going to be. So we try to pull in our veterans as well. When our eighth graders graduate up into high school, they let us know whether or not they want to be involved. And I'm, I kind of also tell them it's an expectation for them, because I miss them when they go to high school. So actually, the Olympian who is in that upper right corner is here tonight, so if you guys have any questions after this, we do have some Olympians in attendance, I may have bribed them with extra credit. But anyway, so one of the big things that we really like about our Olympic situation is it's very student driven. The kids get to pick the games, we just finished our first round of voting, and we have 46 games lined up. Now we're kind of assigning who's going to be where. Our gifted coordinator, Andy Heinecke, says, give me a game. I said, which one you want? He said, one where I can be loud. I said, I got it. So, and if you don't know Andy Heinecke, he's got this big booming voice, so we're going to give him the loud one, so that he can just talk over everybody to be fine. So as we go, one of the other things that's really big, you can see that picture in the lower right, they're, the medals. We didn't know when we were first starting this, like, what was going to catch, what was going to be the greatest thing, but every year, when we do our feedback, we do pre and post feedback for our kids, you know, what did you like, what didn't you like, what was awesome, what wasn't awesome. One of the things that comes back every year is that they love the medals. We spend, we write a Donors Choose, and we spend a good amount of money getting some solid medals. These are not the little ones that they can bend back and forth and break, that is not what these are. I always joke and say that the kids sound like reindeer when they're walking down the hall, they're playing together.
Well, yeah, and, and big thanks to Olatha Public School Foundation, too, because they gave us a grant last year that helped make things bigger and veteran, more fabulous.
We are working on a way to try to make this a situation where it's self-funding. We're thinking about doing like a Quest Store, that kind of thing, because we provide snacks where we overlap with the CBR program at Santa Fe Trail. They bring their CBR kiddos over, and they run the snack area for us, and then, so then they're working on their social skills, our kids are working on their social skills of the pleases and the thank yous and the not, hey, you know, like.
No body checking.
No, no shoulders, you know, no fighting over the Doritos, that kind of thing. So we spend a lot of time really considering, how can we make this an event where our kids are truly going to benefit? Yes, it's fun, yes, we have a blast, yes, I get 17,000 snacks in a day, but we also really want to make sure that there's a purpose for this. Another thing that I really like about the Olympics is our kids learn to lose gracefully. Gifted kids tend to be really used to winning. They're quick at things, you know, they pick up stuff pretty quick, and some of them really struggle when they're not the best of the best. So we spend a lot of time saying, okay, you realize this is the Olympics, like, countries send their best people to compete in the Olympics, you're competing against other people who have also chosen their strongest games, you may not medal. And there are some that are like, okay, and then there are some like, yeah, that's true, okay? And then there are some that lost last year who would say, that'll be the last time I lose that. And then they just train up, train up, train up, and they, they already want to know, what are the games? What are the games? We need to know.
And they legitimately train. I mean, that's a part of the curriculum in the middle schools now, that's starting end of first semester, beginning of second semester.
Maybe already. Might already be training, I don't know, because I like to win, it is what it is. Okay, so a couple of pictures, we'll scroll through. So we did have a speaker, you know what, I'm going to slow these down. Oh, maybe not. Okay, go with it. So this gentleman, he worked for Google Plus and Pixar, and he came and spoke to our kids about how you have to learn to lose. There's our medals, these are a couple of kids, Rubik's, okay, I know these weren't going so fast when I set it up. They create flags for their, their building that represents them, they wave their flags, they come in with uniforms on, like, my group last year, one of my groups did a 1920s style gangsta situation, they had white shirts and black suspenders and fedoras, like the whole nine, and they just, they loved it, except for one girl with some sensory issues, she's like, these suspenders, they can't, and I'm like, oh. So we, the, okay, so where else was I going to go with that? So, anyway. They also, an economy kind of showed up our first year, we did not have any idea that this was coming. So another way that this is very organic and student-led, the kids had baseball cards, we had to make baseball cards, just to kind of, you know, have something to do in their downtime, like, they're not competing in every game the whole time, right? So they have some downtime, we have an Olympic Village, this year we're going to have, they asked, can we have Connect Four? Sure. Can we have a couple of things? Said, yes, we can do that. So while they're in Olympic Village, they can trade. First year, what we realized was they started trading parts of their uniforms. So there were sweatbands going, there were bow ties being shared out, there was one kid who wanted an item from every school, and we said, wait a minute, this makes sense. So the next year, we encouraged the teams to bring swag, so that was last year. CT came on fire. What, they had everything that everybody wanted, they brought these little plushy turtles, and they were only like 10 of them, so supply and demand, right? And the blue ones were worth way more. I'm sorry, Dr. Jaeger, your signed baseball card was not as good as a blue turtle.
Story of my life.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it just wasn't. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It just wasn't. But I did trade two baseball cards for yours so that I could get flashy glasses. So it worked out. So the kids are already thinking about swag for next year. One of my groups is going to use their 3D printer to make their swag, but don't tell any of the other people. That's, I shouldn't have said that. So if you guys have any questions, did you have anything else you want to add?
Okay.
Okay. I get excited. So if you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. If you'd like to help us with our Donors Choose, email us, we'll send you the link. Because it does get kind of expensive. We, we do have the kids bring lunch, but we like to give them snacks, and we like to make it something pretty awesome and pretty big so that they have that opportunity to feel pretty great. Not all my kids are athletes. Not all my kids get that, you know, they're not in the orchestra, they're not in the band, whatever. That gives them an opportunity to shine and be awesome. So, questions? Is this a night?
Tracy and Summer, would you like to introduce the students that are here with us tonight?
Absolutely.
Sure. Do you want them to come up, or you want me to just have my wife?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. My babies, come here. Oh, they didn't know their armpits are shut now. So we actually have a veteran and two rookies. So.
The veteran is taller.
Just by a smidge. Okay, so this is Isaac, and Andrew, and Rannon. This was the one with the hat. So I'm just saying, I hope the hats make a return. Something tells me they're still in existence, and I kind of feel like that could be a high-value bundle of things.
And I, I will just add one final comment. So, Olathe West, we are blessed to get to host this event and to get to have our high schoolers involved. And they are blown away by the talent, the creativity, and the fun of all of our other gifted students in the district. And, you know, best thing ever.
Ever.
Like, we'll, yeah. Any of gifted.
Board, any questions of Angelique and the team?
How did we get this awesome when we're born this way?
I got a quick question.
Mr. Con.
So, this can be a general open question for any of y'all, right?
Except for the kids, because they're.
So, the perfection fairy just showed up. It's Thursday night. Tomorrow, you get to write down or offer them, say, this is what I would need, this is what I would love, this would make the world perfect and great for us on Monday. You show it up at work, whether it's the administration office, or at West, or wherever you are. What, what would that be? What would that feel like? What would that look like? What would that sound like come Monday?
Or two years. I don't even have to think about it.
Okay. We're, we're working on that one.
Well, I mean, absolutely. I think staff is, is the challenge right now, particularly our classified employees. Yes.
Anything else?
I just think it's a great thing that we are, that we're going to interact with general education teachers, because our students, obviously, you know, we talked a lot about inclusion, and we talked, and, and it's good. I mean, clearly, I'm a talker, so I do lots of talking with our general education teachers. And I think our sped staff is amazing, and they do a great job of that. But, you know, sometimes communication is just the root of it all. When we have an opportunity to work together as a team, both special ed and general ed, I think it can only make for a better classroom experience.
I want to just close by saying thank you and thanking some of our, we have our sped instructional coaches, a few of them in the room. We have some families in the room, and we have one of our assistant directors in the room. So we were very happy to be here this evening. So thank you for the invite.
All right, moving on to our public comments. Five dot zero one, Mrs. Steele.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual, individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address.
All right, our first speaker, Erica Sheets.
Hello. I appreciate the opportunity to address the Olathe Board of Education tonight and the Olathe community here. My name is Erica Sheets, and I'm here representing our local chapter of Moms for Liberty, Johnson County, Kansas, as well as supporting our friends at Gays Against Groomers, who you'll hear from shortly, in our joint challenge to three books in the Olathe school system. The books are titled Let's Talk About It, Gender Queer Memoir, and All Boys Aren't Blue. I'd like to thank Superintendent Dr. Brett Jaeger and Chief Academic Officer Dr. Tim Reeves, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, for the responsiveness they've had to our request and for their commitment to an internal review of these books. These books should be removed from Olathe schools as they do not meet the criteria of multiple Olathe policies by this board. They contain obscene sexual illustrations, assault, nudity, sexual activity with a family member, vulgar language and profanity, including homophobic and racial slurs, as well as alcohol and drug abuse. Despite being placed in high school libraries here in Olathe, the reading complexity levels, or Lexile score, of these books, all three of them are at an elementary level. The state of Kansas defines the effective level of ELA proficiency as a level three. And in 2022 data, 60% of Olathe students are testing below the effective level. This represents a 13% decline since 2015, according to Kansas State data, and you can find that at kansasreportcards.ksd.org. Books like these are clearly not adding to the academic rigor of Olathe students in addition to their obscenity. Far too many school libraries are relying on the American Library Association recommendations. The ALA spreads the myth of book bans when age-inappropriate books are removed from schools, which is quite disingenuous. The fact is, these books continue to be available in society at large. One of the co-founders of Moms for Liberty National says it best, write the book, print the book, sell the book. School is for age-appropriate material meant to educate children. We applaud the Olathe administration for their responsiveness to this community on these matters, and we fully support removing these books from the Olathe school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Barrett.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Barrett, and I represent an organization called Gays Against Groomers. We're a national group made up of LGBT people who oppose the sexualization, indoctrination, and medicalization of children that's being done in our community's name. It's been brought to our organization's attention that there are some books coming up for review that we truly believe should not continue being in your school district's libraries. Specifically, these books are Let's Talk About It, Gender Queer, and Not All Boys Are Blue. I want to touch on Let's Talk About It. We are told there is an educational value on a book like this. Let's look at it from a purely academic perspective. The writing, which seems geared toward elementary readers yet is made available to high school students, is truly subpar. It's as if your librarians are next going to start suggesting little golden books for high school students. But the content itself is obviously problematic in a public school library of any type. Kids are exposed to plenty of explicit sexual content online and on social media. Parents need to limit access to this content for their children, and educators should not add to the problem by providing a printed version of gratuitous sexual information, basically bypassing what a parent may want their kids to see. Now, the books that are particularly of interest to me are Not All Boys Are Blue and Gender Queer. Not only are these books an obvious attempt to indoctrinate kids into gender and queer theory, but they specifically relate to my community, the LGBT community. And for those who don't know, gender and queer theory are inherently homophobic and absolutely not appropriate topics in any K through 12 school. I understand these books are placed in libraries under the guise of inclusion. Boards of education, librarians, and teachers across the country love to give themselves a big pat on the back about how inclusive they are of my community. Well, thanks, but no thanks. Books pushing gender and queer theory and are obviously sexually explicit are not the way to include us. Has it ever occurred to anyone who makes decisions about these books that they could actually be hurting my community? There is a backlash brewing against us, and some folks here are part of the problem. Think about it. Statistically, gay people are a very small percentage of our population. So most of the people making these decisions on behalf of my community probably are not actually LGBT. So please stop trying to speak on our behalf. If you truly listen to my community, you'd find quite a spectrum of thought on these issues. Sure, some of us actually promote junk education like this, just like there are plenty of straight people who do. But I can tell you that there is a large percentage of us that absolutely oppose books like Gender Queer that indoctrinate rather than educate. That's why organizations like Gays Against Groomers are popping up all over the world. We are tired of do-gooders speaking on our behalf. We want our voice back. Listen to us, all of us, not just the ones you agree with. And for God's sake, listen to parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Bricks.
Good evening, Board of Education. Pardon my voice tonight. This week, I completely lost my voice, and I talked for a whole day with not talking at all, so I apologize. My name is Megan Bricks, and I appreciate that I'm given the time to speak today. One of my biggest passions in life is to advocate for students to receive the best possible public education possible, as well as advocate for everyone who works within the educational system. I want to be honest with you all. It is difficult to stand up here in front of a large audience, both in person and those watching the live stream, and use my voice to advocate for what needs to happen in order to meet the expectation that the Olathe public schools will prepare all students for their future. Standing up here puts myself out there to be judged or critiqued by all, but I push past the fear and nervousness because what I do each month is very important to me, important to my colleagues, important to my students and their families in the community. How will we ever make improvements if we don't ask questions or bring up difficult topics? Tonight, I want to focus on substitutes. As we are nearing the end of first quarter, we are already being hit with substitute positions going unfilled, which is scary to think as we haven't truly entered the typical sick time of the school year. As a district, you've done an amazing job getting the word out about how to apply to be a substitute and going to both local and community events to reach more community members. But I feel that one very important piece of information is missing. Within our educational field, we utilize data every day within our classrooms. Last Board of Education meeting, we heard tons of data about our state assessments. I would absolutely love to see a monthly report added to the board documents that outlines the number of substitute positions requested, either within a week or, or within the month, as well as the number of those positions that went unfilled. It doesn't need to be broken down by level or even building. I feel that sharing this baseline data about subs positions across the district will be informational for the community. We'll be able to see the positions and the numbers and allow our community to be able to know what is actually happening. Our staff deserve to know that there will be a substitute, and they won't have to worry about their colleagues having to teach their class or cover during their planned time. Our staff shouldn't have to worry that students aren't receiving specific supports throughout a day because there was no substitute to work with a student during their scheduled support time. Our focus must always return to how the students are being impacted. And from the conversations I am having, it seems that the lack of substitutes to fill positions are truly impacting our students' educations as well as putting some burden on teachers and staff who already have full plates right now. I hope that you, as a board, will be open to having a conversation about how to share substitute fill rate data with the community, as it will greatly impact our current situations. I understand that it will require someone to create this work, but it will be very valuable for our educational system. I look forward to our school board continuing to focus the conversations around students and how we are supporting their education. Again, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you. Matthew Dinner. Matthew Dinner. Matthew Dinner. Jenny Gilmore.
I heard on the radio the other day, an analogy of always using a hammer when we really need a screwdriver. Using a hammer simply because it's the one new shiny tool we grab first or have on hand, we actually create other problems sometimes. As I sat and reflected on this, I kept thinking about our Olathe schools. Tonight, you will loudly and proudly celebrate your hammers. But when I get a progress report from my daughter that reads, Kaylee's score on early reading is in high risk. This means that Kaylee needs additional support to improve foundational early reading. Kaylee's score on early reading is higher than 21% of students in the same grade in Kaylee's district. Kaylee's scores is higher than 11% of students in the same grade across the nation. It's clear that Kaylee needs more than a hammer. She needs another tool. There are thousands more like Kaylee in our district who are behind and struggling, but you will be up here celebrating your hammers. The early intervention on literacy in our district is severely lacking, and I see it at our Mission Trail Site Council. But because we can find data that would say a child with acriss is better than a child in Maine, you all still celebrate. And you can bang your gavel like a hammer, but it's not solving problems. Someone asked me the other day, are you for equity or equality? And I replied, I support reality. It is reasonable to acknowledge that some students have greater needs than others, and some start behind others, but that they all have the same opportunity in our Olathe schools to prosper. But not every student succeeds with a hammer. So we need board members willing to do the work to find more tools so that we can all truly celebrate and they can succeed. Tonight, as you vote to uncenter my elected board official for District Three, I would like to request you reassign Mission Trail as Brian Connell Site Council appointment. Considering I have attended Site Council at Mission Trail for the past three years, no one on this board has attended our committee meetings. You do not show up. So give the spot to someone that wants to show up and will continue to show up and find us something other than a hammer, because your hammers are not working. Thank you.
Sarah Sams.
Dear Olathe board members, my name is Sarah Sams. I'm a teacher and special educator at the Mill Creek Campus. Before I would begin, I would like to model how to discuss difficult topics. This evening, I will be talking about suicide and its surrounding terminology. If this topic will be upsetting to you, please feel free to leave. Moreover, if you or someone you know is struggling with suicidal ideation, please seek help immediately. Call or text 988. Help is available. You really matter. Today, I stand before you with a heavy heart and a burning passion to address the topic that is often concealed by stigma and fear, suicide. September was, and still is, Suicide Awareness Month. I'm here to discuss what the correct adverbage is around this issue and why it is crucial to utilize it. I come to you as a person who has seen many people struggle with suicide, my own students included. I also became a suicide advocate five years ago when my own father chose to take his life. Olathe Board, you are seen as leaders in this community. And when you decide to speak about suicide, you must choose your words with care and compassion, both for the person who might be struggling and for those who are left by suicide. As As a board, you need to abandon the outdated phrase "committed suicide." This terminology implies that a criminal act has been committed. In fact, no one has committed suicide since nineteen seventy-three, when North Carolina became the last state to abolish the legalization of suicide. When you choose the words "committed suicide," you are casting judgment and shame upon those who are already struggling. You might ask, "Then what do we say?" I'm here to tell you. Uh, the phrases such as "died by suicide" or even my personal choice, "they chose suicide." These phrases utilize empathy and understanding while also recognizing the pain and despair that is left when someone can make such a tragic decision. So why is it important to utilize these words and not the others? It's very simple, because our words can either perpetrate the stigma and shame or pave the way for empathy and understanding. When we choose our words with care, we acknowledge the pain of those who have been touched by suicide, encourage open conversations, and reduce the barriers that prevent individuals from seeking help. Let us remember that behind every statistic, every news headline, and every whispered rumor, there is a person, a person worthy of empathy and respect. In conclusion, be the changemakers, the advocates, and the empathetic listeners who use language as a powerful tool for healing. Let us cast aside the shadows and stigma and fear and choose words that illuminate the path towards a more compassionate and inclusive community where no one feels alone in their battle against suicide. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaylin Campion.
My name is Kaylin Campion, and I hope that I emailed you guys a picture of what I showed to the teachers before an IEP meeting. It's something that I learned from the inclusive schooling that I did that has been offered to every teacher and para in the Olathe School District. One of the main reasons that I provide that page is because there isn't communication between SED and the general education team, and I'm really worried that general education teachers may not know that their students have the disability that they do, and that's how they get those behave, those, um, labels of behavior kid, and that can also put us at risk for mental health crisis. Um, I wasn't gonna talk tonight, honestly, but then I looked back at what I said in June, and I realized that my needs are the exact same. They haven't changed. My son is under evaluation, and he's still in a mental health crisis. He still doesn't want to go to school. He still wets himself every day, um, and he doesn't have this issue at home. The most important thing to know about that is, um, I'm sorry, it's just really hard to hear them talk about SED and act like you can remove a disability. My son is gonna have autism for the rest of his life. He's gonna need accommodations and modifications throughout elementary school, middle school, and high school, and the school keeps trying to remove his resources. Um, I asked if there were other placement options, and I was told that he needs a least restricted environment, and we must exhaust every single resource in the Gen Ed program before we consider a different placement. And my son's been in evaluation for the past four months, and the only resources I've seen exhausted are staff members, the principal, the resource teacher, the specials teachers, and the Gen Ed teacher. And that's not fair to those teachers. It's not fair to his peers, and it's not fair to my son. And I really want you guys to consider how you can actually be inclusive by acknowledging disabilities. Um, I heard them talk about a special ed Olympics program that isn't a part of the district, that someone said that they really found value and wanted to help kids with special needs. Why don't we have an Olympics for our special ed kids? Why are we doing that for the gifted kids? I loved that they said that the gifted kids have a flag to identify themselves with. Why are we not having our different flags where our kids can come in community, identify each other together? Um, they talked about tools, like sensory rooms. Do we have a sensory room in every school? I don't think we do. Does every room have fidgets, sensory supports, um, different seating? They don't. Are teachers educated how to use those sensory tools? They're not, and that's why there needs to be more communication with the Gen Ed and the SED program if we really want to co-teach and if we really want to be inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Lanter.
Hello there, I am Patty. Um, I am talking about understanding. Understanding when you are being manipulated for another's personal gain is vital, evidenced by the actions of board members that silence others that are trying to speak on behalf of the children. They, they are silenced for opposing an agenda in education and pointing out grievous problems in the system. I will remind you that all school districts are to be locally managed, not through public-private partnerships, not through dictates by the Department of Education and union partners. Lying and deception is inherently wrong, whether one thinks they have a greater goal or not. In this school district, it seems like the rules are changed or ignores to make it simpler to silence someone, allowing the deception to continue. All of us support teachers and also support public education, but know that the goal for children has been hijacked for collectivism. There are no individuals in the collective except power-hungry elitists that have plenty to hide. They use ad hominem attacks because they do not want the curtain lifted. They do not allow comment on these attacks, except from other approved elitists. Questioning is vital to improving anything and helps remove corruption and waste. We need truth and accountability. I encourage all to lift the veil and read as much as you can, and I implore you to listen to the Kansas Education Committee this week. It brings light to some of the ways that these special ed budgets have been hijacked. All of you should want the same, rather than rubber stamping at all costs to support the growing budget of public education and taking more in taxes. Understand that when textbooks and teacher training programs are used to train activists, they do create activists that know nothing about reality. Understand that when people tout their political connectedness, um, and administrative connectedness and union connectedness as a good thing for our children, this is deceptive. Holding multiple offices, pursuing multiple offices, or sitting on a board for any organization, um, I disagree with this. A school board should be similar to an outside forensic auditor or analyst tasked with rooting out what hurts kids and getting rid of it. They should also be locally minded and not accept what is pushed by others to create activists. Please listen to the, um, speeches by the Department of, uh, I'm sorry, by the NEA. It won't take more than a few sentences to hear the sound of the cult preacher. Understand when an unscientific survey is produced, with forced results, it is not objective, it is a lie. Our opinion is not wanted, decisions have been made, and the goal is likely nothing that was ever stated as the premise. Perhaps the goal is really a four-day week or even online school. Teachers, this does not bode well for your profession. Understand when you are being lied to. When Secretary Cardona says that kids can't read because books are banned, he is lying and hiding the real problems of why kids can't read. He doesn't tell you that removing explicit materials for children is not banning. He doesn't tell you that they are graphic, and if read on the street to a child, you would be arrested. This does not have anything to do with literacy. Understand that when, um, KS, KSB, NEA, Department of Ed, and school boards don't like being questioned is because they are hiding a whole lot of agenda darkness that has been in the works for a very long time. Support public education by choosing differently. Let's get the bad spending and global agenda followers out of our local schools. Parents, not politicians. Thank you.
Hillary Junk.
Hello, Board. My name is Hillary Junk. Um, I'm a proud Meadow Lane, Santa Fe Trail, and Olathe North graduate. I'm back in the area after being away for a bit, and I've been impressed by the amount of growth, um, programming and your ability to do it. Um, it's been emotional for me today because of the reflection I did on this. Because I owe so much of my professional and personal success to the Olathe educators who saw me along my journey. Um, today I didn't, cleaning out an old box from high school and I came across some letters and stuff, and it's a bit emotional. But why I do this speech today is because I want to pay it forward. I had so many amazing teachers, and I understand that teacher environments are student learning environments, so I hope I can speak up to, for some of the teachers that taught me and have become friends, friends that have chosen the profession. Um, I understand that teacher recruitment retention obviously is an issue that not just this district is dealing with, but everyone else. Um, I applaud your efforts with the Future Educator Academy. Love that long-term thinking. Um, I also understand that pools, the applicant pools for many of our secondary level positions have sort of evaporated, uh, especially like math or science teachers. I understand we're using long-term subs for some of these roles, and I applaud the community members for stepping up to fill those roles. But I do worry about the sustainability of it, because I understand there are impacts, be it the planning, the grading, and everything else on the peer department features within that. I know we ask for teachers a lot, and they step up above and beyond, but, and I, our teachers could put out fires on the twelfth story of a building if we asked them to, but we're only giving them an eight-story ladder. It's, over time, I don't want to lose those teachers. So I ask you to just consider, as much as we're considering succession planning with the Future Educators Program and whatnot, we also consider the short-term impacts on our current teachers, um, who are shouldering the extra burden of planning and grading, especially as we're seven or eight weeks into schooling. And, um, I, I know you guys are well in touch with the, uh, post-secondary institutions in Kansas, and I hope there are discussions about their education programs, especially math, science, the ones where we're seeing, um, a challenge for applicants. So, uh, yeah, I don't know if my future teacher would love everything that I just said. She might have a few notes from me. Um, I'm sure I will hear from her. Thank you.
Carrie Van Buskerk.
Good evening, Carrie Van Buskerk. I'm a proud Olathe South parent of children with disabilities. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you all this evening. Disability is natural, and disability impacts each and every individual uniquely. That sense of belonging in the environment where they thrive is also very specific for each and every person, and Gen Ed simply isn't always the place that fits. I'm constantly reassured by our staff that they are incredibly committed and devoted to meeting the needs of each and every single student, as shared by your committed teacher just this evening. They always go above and beyond and quite frankly exhaust themselves. This is something that they strive to achieve and do each and every day, and it appears to be increasingly more difficult in many Gen Ed settings, especially now with a near two-hundred para shortage and twenty-four certified SED vacancies and a vast sub shortage. Providing specially-designed instruction in, with two students in their least restricted environment with the supplementary aids and services needed to access the general education curriculum is simply increasingly difficult, and in some instances, it's simply not attainable. Students are eloping. Classrooms are being cleared. Students are experiencing trauma due to masking and bullying. Many are not accessing their learning support. Sensory breaks, while needed, are often hard to get in. Teachers are being injured. Students are spending far too much time in isolation and not engaged in meaningful instruction. So sometimes it is thoughtful for us to sit and examine and ask as a team, "Is this placement While the least restricted environment is unique to each and every student, it is important to note that it isn't always Gen Ed. The Kansas Department of Education Process Handbook in Chapter Seven defines least restricted environment and tells us that the least restricted environment does not require that every child with a disability be placed in the general education classroom regardless of the child's individual abilities and needs. The law recognizes that full-time general education classroom placement may not be appropriate for each and every child with a disability. It also guides us that parent participation in this placement process is vital. Parents have the right to be a part of the decision-making team for determining their child's education placement and have input into that decision. Thank you.
Rachel Pratt.
My name is Rachel Pratt. I'm a resident of this city, and I'm a single mother to five children. My five, my five children are currently enrolled and have been enrolled in public school with this district since pre-K. We have twelve years invested into the public education system, and I wish I could say the same system has twelve years invested into my five children, but sadly I cannot. In the past twelve years, my experience with the public schooling, administrators, some teachers, some support staff, has been nothing short of the following: pure exhaustion, frustration, concerning, lack of communication, hardship, disappointment, and the list goes on. I could stand here today and lay out some of the few unhappy times my children and I have shared, but I am not here for that today, because I do not want the issues that need to be addressed, get lost, or dismissed any more than what they have already have done. Two of my children have 504s and two have IEPs. Two of those children are autism. Only one is identified as such. The other is identified as an other health impairment. My child's needs and goals have been set above and beyond what they can even attempt to accomplish. That was said at their new schools that they have gone to. Um, they can't even attempt to accomplish or access any of the education because the goals are set too high. Both have been suspended for what quote-unquote "behavior issues." I have pled and begged and argued for nine years to get the much-needed supports in place for my children. I am still unsuccessful and still pleading to my children's needs so that my children's needs get met. My children are directly affected and their med, their needs are not being met. So just because a child has a disability does not mean they qualify for SED services. We get that. All of us in purple here today have shared those same, uh, conversations with a lot of the SED services. I have been told this for the past nine years with regard to both of my autistic children. They are described or defined as being defiant, refusing to come inside from recess, refusing to do work, hiding under the desk, running out of the class, locking themselves in different doors other than a classroom setting. Although both of my children's behaviors are outlined throughout their IEPs, it was documented that a functional behavior assessment was not needed. How exactly can one expect progress for improved behaviors if the district's team of supports do not feel identifying the why to the behavior is not needed? So you are correct when statements were made regarding teachers being tired, administration being tired, and assume they're exhausted. Pairs are stretched thin, parents are exhausted, and our hard-functioning autistic kids are suffering while failing to self-reg, failing to self-regulate at the end of the day. The question is, and apparently has been, what exactly is your action plan moving forward for autistic kids? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to six dot zero one. We need twenty minutes for an executive session. I entertain a motion.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at seven fifty PM in this room.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Dr. Yurkovich.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes.
Moving on to our action consent agenda items, seven dot zero one through seven dot one four. Board, any questions, anything we need to pull out?
Move to approve seven point zero one as, or two seven point one four as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. All right, moving to action bids, contracts, and agreements, eight dot zero one through eight dot zero eight. Anything we need to pull out? Any questions from the board?
Mr. President, I might ask that we just either pull out or have Mr. Humphrey speak to eight dot zero seven, since that's a big line item, and explain a little bit of that.
Okay. Is that the only question we have? Okay. Josh, if you want to come up and address that, and then we'll take them all together.
Twice in two months, so thank you again for that. I do appreciate it. Yeah, overall, you know, we've been really excited about the opportunity to just bring new devices to kids. One of the things that we identified really early was that the devices that were in the hands of our students were aging, and a part of what you guys have approved has helped us put some really awesome devices in some kids' hands that's going to enhance instruction and really kind of help the day-to-day impact on students. Just today, we were at an Oregon Trail and saw some kids using them exactly as intended. So when we went through this original purchase, we had, you know, we always kind of knew that it might be a secondary purchase needed. We wanted to hit them as exact as possible, making sure that we were able to fulfill the needs both in our middle schools and high schools, but then using some of the inventory that we had previously, making sure that we depleted that, and then were able to then readdress what devices may now, this is kind of what today's are, to kind of fill some of our special education programs, our alternative ed buildings, and even some of our elementary schools to kind of, to John Hutchison's point, you know, earlier when we were kind of going through this future action item, in terms of putting devices on a predictable replacement cycle, so that we can use the devices and pull them into Capital Alley.
Very good.
May I ask a quick question? So when we spoke about a month ago, you had mentioned in passing, and I do not recall, there was something better, different for these particular, this version of the computers that you had mentioned that was going to, whether security or access or functional locks and stuff.
Great question.
Can you remember what we were talking about?
Yeah, we were actually talking about durability of the device. You know, one of the biggest impacts that we saw a need for with our devices specifically at the middle school, but also at the high school level, was a need for a durable device. The devices that was in the hands of our middle school students, they were breaking, you know, they were not as durable, not as robust. These devices are essentially, they are very, very durable, and they allow These devices are essentially, they are, they are very, very durable, and they allow us to put a device in our hands that we can feel confident can sustain the lifestyle, the lifecycle, lifestyle of a middle school student. I have one. So, I can attest that it is doing very well within our household, but then also just to make sure that we're not spending, you know, money to repair these devices as well.
Yeah, those are the days we were doing the school tours, and you're like, there was like, we're, we're waiting on some devices to be delivered for some of the new kids.
So, all of our, all of our high school students currently have them, and the majority of our middle school kids, all of our sixth grader kids have them, and most of our seventh or eighth grader kids are getting them as we speak or currently have them in place, so we're really excited to see it.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right, board, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion on eight dot zero one through eight dot zero eight.
I move to approve eight dot zero one through eight dot zero eight.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
All right, those motions carry seven zero. Moving on to action other nine dot zero one. Barbara, do you need to cease, is this a cease nomination deal, or take volunteers?
Yes.
It is. You have to cease nominations.
Board, any volunteers to be appointed to the, to be the assembly person and the alternate delegate for the KSB, um, assembly meetings?
I'm happy to volunteer, and nobody else wants? Lovely opportunity, it is great though, seriously.
We're going to pencil Mrs. Steele in as the delegate? Is there anyone going that would like to sign up as the alternate? I am traveling for work that week, so I will be out of town.
Dr. Yurkovich, do you want to be the alternate?
Alternate, sure, sure, I'll be the alternate.
All right, for nine dot zero one, I entertain a motion to appoint Julie Steele as delegate and Dr. Yurkovich as alternate delegate to represent Olathe Public Schools at the 2023 Kansas Association of School Board Delegates Assembly Meetings.
Mr. President, do we need to have a motion to cease nominations first?
Yes.
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wickliffe and a second by, is that Joe? Mrs. Beveridge.
Do you want to take a vote on that?
Yes.
Great.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
All right, we have officially ceased nominations. Thank you, sir. And now, I would entertain a motion to appoint Julie Steele as delegate and Dr. Yurkovich as alternate delegate to represent the Olathe Public Schools at the 2023 KSB Delegate Assembly Meetings.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Moving to action other nine dot zero two. I'll entertain a motion, we can open the floor for discussion, however you guys want to handle it.
Mr. President, before discussion or a motion, I'd like to propose an amendment and make a comment.
Dr. Yurkovich, the floor is yours.
I will begin by acknowledging the chasm in relationships the censure has caused, and your desire and need, Mr. Connell, to have an end date to bring closure. In hindsight, perhaps that should have been included when the censure was imposed. However, I would also draw attention to the fact that, except for the limitations regarding committee membership and leadership positions, you have participated as a fully involved member of the Board of Education, attending meetings, events, adding to discussion, voting, and et cetera. I also feel strongly that it is important for the board and its members to be fully functioning. That being said, in good conscience, I cannot support the resolution as written, and I'm proposing to amend it. I will state the proposed amendment and then share my comments as to why I'm making the proposal. I would propose that the last sentence read, "During the December 7th, 2023 meeting, the board will discuss reinstating one of the conditions currently being withheld associated with the censure and establish a future date for a further review and discussion related to reinstating additional conditions. A decision to reinstate will be dependent upon a consistent adherence by Mr. Connell to all elements of Board Policy BH, School Board Member Ethics. The basis for my comments and for the censure enacted on May 16th, 2023, was a failure to adhere to the expectations for Olathe School Board Members in Policy BH. During the May 4th, Olathe Board Meeting, Mr. Connell's outburst and comments violated Bullet Points Number Two. Understand that our board meetings are a reflection of the district and directly affect student success. We will be respectful of all board members and keep all discussions civil. Number nine, will respect and listen to opinions of all board members. And number 10, will respect the time of board members, staff, and the community during our board meetings. Although that was my first meeting as a board member, I had watched other board meetings and observed Mr. Connell behave in a way that violated this board policy. To terminate the censure, there needs to be a change in behavior, such that Policy BH is respected and followed. Unfortunately, during the September 7th meeting, despite having been censured, another display of Mr. Connell consumed nearly 10 minutes of the board meeting, during which time he made negative statements about other board members, referring to them by name. Additionally, during the meeting, he called out by name and was disrespectful to a member of the community present in the audience that evening. It is a concern that if Mr. Connell fails to adhere to this policy during a board meeting, which is public and livestreamed, what is to prevent him from behaving in the same fashion during a committee meeting with staff or community members? For this reason, I propose that the resolution be amended as stated. This will allow an opportunity for Mr. Connell to demonstrate adherence to Policy BH over a two-month span during tonight's meeting and the November meeting. Thank you.
Okay, for the record, Dr., do you have an extra copy of that so Barbara can?
I do.
Okay.
Do you just want?
Yeah, if you can just hit it this way, so she don't have to try to handwrite all of that. And then, so from my understanding, you're taking the proposed resolution that we received, and you're adding?
I'm amending, um, the be it resolved that, that portion of it.
Okay.
Do you mind reading it again?
I'd be happy to. I'll, I'll read it with the be it resolved that. "During the December 7th, 2023 meeting, the board will discuss reinstating one of the conditions currently being withheld associated with the censure and establish a future date for further review and discussion related to reinstating additional conditions. A decision to reinstate will be dependent upon a consistent adherence by Mr. Connell to all elements of Board Policy BH, School Board Member Ethics."
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
I'd like to provide comments.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Beveridge. Comments by Mr. Connell?
So, I'd like to first start with the, the fact that the board policy or protocol enforced by this board is that we do not add amendments on the diets. They must be supplied three days in advance to the agenda. So, with that in place, your own model to add an amendment to an existing policy would not be acceptable at the board at this time. It should have been provided three days in advance, so that all board members were available and accessible to it, per your own insistence.
It, it's my understanding that that relates to adding items to the agenda. Nine dot zero two was added to the agenda, and Dr. Yurkovich is making a motion on this agenda item.
But she also had time to do that, the last three days in which she was fully aware of it. Secondarily, I like to, just for the, for the record, the censure in itself is not proper. There's no statute, no board, no policy, no protocol, no rules or otherwise that allows the board to have even created a censure. To amend this about a censure that should have never existed. Secondly, related to that, Ms. Yurkovich said I made comments about board members. Well, I do recall on May 16th that at least, one, two, three, four, four board members read defamatory and personal attacks at me. So, she's condemning my comments last month without condemning the board members' comments and attacks. Also, during the censure process, there was no due process. So, the process of the exact censure broke all protocols that anybody could have imagined. Even our students, when they were accused of something, are given access to due process structures. This board lacks any policy for punishment nor enforcement there is. So, any vote on this, whether I vote for it or not? So, but I will say that the language that's there is benign enough, and I have asked for the censure to be removed, that I would support it as it is. Because to not do so would be hypocritical, because in both, when Robbie, Mr. Kuhn presented in July, and then I presented in September, the removal of said censure. To now have a, a model that is benign enough would be wrong for me not to vote for it. So, I suggest that this not be amended, as recommended by Doc Yurkovich, and be accepted and moved forward as it's presented. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, just a point of clarification, please, or to Dr. Yurkovich. What, what is it that happens at the, after, after two more meetings of adherence to Policy BH by Mr. Connell?
It's my understanding that after two more meetings, during the December 7th meeting, the board would discuss reinstating one of the conditions currently being withheld associated with Mr. Connell's censure.
Thank you.
Dr. Yurkovich, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
So, I just wanted to ask for a clarification, too.
Mr. Beveridge, go ahead.
The agreement about inserting items in the agenda is not in policy, I don't think.
No.
That was just an agreement. And just in Dr. Yurkovich's defense, that was probably about a year, a year, a year and a half before. So, I don't know if you were aware of that or not, but that was something that we discussed as a board when Ms. Felter had her seat, so we did agree that if we were going to make any amendments.
But it was reiterated by our president, Mr. Boyd.
That's true, yeah.
In, in, in July, when Mr. Kuhn asked to add something, and he said, this would be the last time, we won't do that again. And so, that was, that's fresh with Dr. Yurkovich.
Yeah, that's true. If I, if I can just clarify, um, nine dot zero two was added to the agenda in the appropriate time. So, we add, so I allowed it to be added to the agenda. Once an item is on the agenda, any board member can make any motion on that agenda item. We are, we don't have to bring our, every motion under the sun for each agenda item we plan on making. The agenda item just has to be there 72 hours before, so every board member is aware of it. So, the motions don't have to be there before, but the agenda item does.
And that's not a rule nor policy, nor written in guidelines?
Correct. That's an agreement, that's, that's the seven of us have.
Yep.
Board, any other discussion?
I would just clarify, too, Mr. President, that goes for any agenda item on the agenda.
Correct.
That's just, that's no matter what the agenda item is. It can be amended.
Yes.
Mr. President, may I?
Mr. Wickliffe?
So, I appreciate, um, Dr. Yurkovich's thoughts. I have many of the same. I'm not sure, and it probably doesn't matter, because the December 7th meeting will be my last, but because there has been no change in behavior, because the, the voice of Mr. Connell and his vote have not been taken from him, information for committees has not been taken from him, the, um, calling out of a community member who was in the audience. As this is written, I, I cannot support it, so.
I'd like to add one last comment, thank you, Mr. Wickliffe.
Hold on, Mr. Connell, you don't have the floor yet.
Mr. Boyd, may I? Yep.
Before we turn the table back, the, the floor back to Mr. Connell, are there any board members have any comments that haven't had a chance to speak on this agenda item yet? Mr. Connell, the floor is yours, sir.
So, I appreciate the, uh, opportunity that she's had, once added, that Dr. Yurkovich would like to add an amendment. However, she references BH, which is the exact process, problem that that may be what it was all about. Board members were circumventing board policy, breaking board policy, to replace the existing ethics policy with four new bullet points that would have erased the actual bullet points that Dr. Yurkovich has now recommended. And in writing, we have board members who said that they would not support changing, modifying it. The board policy that sits in front of you as BH today, BH today, is actually the one that I took the prior, and the four points that Ms. Steele and Mr. Beveridge were working to replace it with, and merged the two together to get what's here. So, this board policy as it exists today did not exist on May 4th. So, to reference it today would be a mistake, because Ms. Yurkovich would have to reference legally what it was at the time. So, I just want to make sure I call that out, that she can amend that even if she liked to, but I'm just making sure we're really looking at the legal statutory rights of what there was and was not at the time, and the impetus for the upset and frustration on my part in that meeting, so.
Board, any other comments, Dr. Yurkovich?
Just a clarification, did we not approve this policy the evening of May 4th?
We did.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Steele?
Just one more point of clarification. Um, those, uh, the ethics policy was reviewed by Mr. Kuhn, Mr. Beveridge, and Mrs. Steele. And you tend to say it's just Mr. Beveridge and Mrs. Steele, so I'd like to correct that for the record. And I'd like, like to also mention that the irony is, is just deafening, that the policy that was so important for you to keep is the policy that is causing a problem for you to be uncensured. That's all we're asking, is to follow the policy.
I appreciate that, Mrs. Steele. I'd just like everyone to follow all the board policies all the time, and not just be selective.
Board, any other comments on nine dot zero two?
Mr. President, since I'm clear, if this, if, if comments are done, we are going to the amended version.
I will, I will read the resolution as I understand it before a vote.
I just want to make sure.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Mr. President, point of?
Mr. Connell?
Point of order. Technically, you would need to vote on the addition of an amendment to the agenda item first, then on the amended full policy, then vote a second time. I believe what right now her motion was to add an addendum to it.
We only have one motion on the floor, sir.
That's what I'm saying, her motion was to add the, the addendum.
I think Mr. Pittman can.
I'm just.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we're following.
I got you.
Thank you, Chris.
I mean, I like it, but I do want to follow the rules.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree, I think we need to vote on the, the motion to, to amend, and that, and that, if that is passed, then you would vote on the, on the resolution itself.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, gotcha. Board, any other discussion? Barbara, you want to call the vote on the motion to amend?
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
No.
Mr. Connell?
No.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
No.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
The motion passes five two. Now.
Five, four, three.
Sorry, four, three. The motion to amend passed. All right, on to. On to the resolution itself. Whereas on May 16th, 2023, the board censured Mr. Connell for his behavior at the board meeting. Whereas as part of the censure, the board removed Mr. Connell from all committee assignments and leadership positions indefinitely. Whereas as part of the censure, the board directed district staff to enforce any security measures it saw fit to help effectuate the censure. Whereas the entire board remains committed to its goal of providing the best educational system possible within the financial limitation of the district, and whereas the entire board believes it can achieve its goal only when its members collaborate thoughtfully, cohesively, and professionally. Be it resolved that during the December 7th, 2023 meeting, the board will discuss reinstating one of the conditions currently being withheld associated with the censure, and establish a future date for further review and discussion related to reinstating additional conditions. A decision to reinstate will be dependent upon consistent adherence by Mr. Connell to all elements of board policy BH, school board member ethics. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution as amended.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich and a second by Mrs. Steele.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
No.
Mr. Connell?
No.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
No.
Mr. Boyd?
The motion passes 4-3. Moving to future action items, 10.01 through 10.13. Board, if you have questions, make sure you get those to Dr. Jaeger, so he can pass those on to the appropriate staff. We have two information written reports, our Head Start Director's Report and the 22-2 Bond Issue Update. On to board topics for discussion. Board, any topics for discussion?
I would if you're open to it.
Mr. Connell, the floor is yours, sir.
So, as reviewing Kansas statutes, the law, I could not find one, not one, that starts with the school district or district must, should, shall, is responsible for, et cetera. All of them in Kansas statutes all start with the board, or the Board of Education, must, should, shall, is responsible for. I share this to remind anyone and everyone who is responsible and accountable for everything that goes on in a school district in Kansas. That's these seven individuals are directly responsible for every aspect, from whether we're at the 30,000-foot level to down in the weeds. We are elected to be the voice and advocates for every constituent, period. And we seven must be held accountable for everything that happens in the district. Thank you.
Board, any other comments? Topics for discussion?
I do have a few, Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Steele?
All right. So just a few on many different subjects. First of all, if you're not aware, Olathe Northwest has really been through it lately with a tuberculosis outbreak. And I just want to take a minute to commend our Health Department and our Communications Department for running points on this. It is really something to have to sort through, something like that. And as a parent at Olathe Northwest now, and back in 2016 when we also had an outbreak, I'm just so impressed how our different agencies come together to work, to make sure that we get ahead of that. So thank you to our Comms Department and to our Health Department. Appreciate all of you. I'd also like to just say, as a former Sped teacher in Olathe and a former Sped parent, I'm just smiling on the inside with the presentation tonight. So thank you for disclosing all of that great information, for never being settled with good enough. We are always looking to do better. I'm quite amazed by the good things that are happening for our Sped kids, and I know that we're constantly working to make things better in the areas that they need to be. I would also say that, you know, specifically to Ann Jeanette, she is a servant leader. She loves Sped, and she loves Sped kids. And on top of that, she is such a supporter for Olathe District. So I thank you for all the work that you're doing to make this a great place for Sped kids, so thank you. I also wanted to mention just a couple points of things that I checked on since the last meeting. Regarding the Special Liability Fund, I think it's important to understand that that fund comes from taxpayers. That is taxpayer money. And if that fund runs out or runs low, we go to the general budget to compensate. I will leave it there, but I just want to make sure we're all clear. And lastly, I did do some checking with Tim Dewis at our Johnson County Mental Health Department. And due to some inaccurate information that was shared at the last meeting regarding the number of people who have, I'm going to get this right, let me go to my notes, because I really appreciated that speaker. The number of people who have chosen suicide or have died by suicide. The numbers that were shared at our meeting from this dais were not accurate, according to Tim Dewis. And so I just want to clarify that he has good numbers, and if you're interested in knowing what those numbers are, he's more than willing to educate you. And lastly, on a happy note, I'd like to wish Ms. Debbie Evers a happy retirement for being the face and warmth for students, staff, and visitors at Olathe Northwest. Thank you for your dedication and service to our district and community, and you won't be forgotten as we go out and make those wise choices. So thank you, Debbie. Enjoy retirement.
Board, any other comments? Mrs. Beveridge?
I was just going to add that the first thing that the girls' golf team at Olathe Northwest did when they grabbed the trophy was say, "We don't get to give this to Ms. Debbie anymore." They were so sad about that, so, yeah, wish her well as well.
Board, any other comments? All right. I just want to highlight, we are in the middle of Hispanic Heritage Month. It runs from September 15th through October 15th. I'm excited to spend some time this weekend with some of our staff as they celebrate that month of celebration. And then on a personal note, today is my son's 17th birthday. So BJ, if you're watching, you know, thank you for allowing Dad to serve here tonight and postpone your birthday dinner. I appreciate it.
Do you really think he's watching?
He's 17, of course he's not watching. But I love you, my boy. Dr. Jaeger?
Thank you. Several things I want to mention tonight. The first one, and I know you've seen this, and we'll do a very official celebration at our next board meeting, but huge congratulations to Taylor Bussinger, who was named the Kansas Teacher of the Year, the Social Studies Teacher at Prairie Trail. I tell you, I've had a chance to be in his classroom a number of times, and the guy is an infectious educator. He's just amazing. And had the opportunity to watch all of his speeches that he's given in the process in Wichita, and so much for us to be proud of as we celebrate him, and he just represents the best of the best in education so well, not just our district. So huge shout out and congratulations to him. I'd also like to thank Dr. McMullin and our Assistant Superintendent, Clint Albers, Dr. Smith, Dr. Waters, and Dr. Harrison, who have been working on our Start and End Time Committee work. We have several meetings, I think, too, actually officially under our belt, and lots of data analysis and what have you. And as you see in our community, even on our own district Facebook page, lively conversation about that. And, you know, I think that represents the hard decision this is for all of us that live in this community, and the substantial changes that we're talking about. But I want to say that Dr. McMullin and our others who have been working on that, Olivia, and our Transportation Department has just been amazing, you know, and it's hard work. And, you know, it's hard because I don't know that there's very many people in our district team that don't live in the district, that don't look across the street from us or the people next door to us, and fully recognize that whatever we suggest to you as a Board of Education is going to impact people that we know and care about in our community and that kind of thing. But I do just want to thank those in our community who've had the ability to really focus, as Dr. McMullin has said at each meeting, on that larger picture. It's really hard when you have kids and you have a vested interest in a certain level to pull back and really look at the whole picture. But I've so appreciated the conversations that have happened, and the conversations that have lent themselves to what's best for all kids in our system. And at the end of the day, that has to be our North Star as a school system. So I just say that to say we'll have a lot of in-depth data and information for you at our next board meeting, as it's a future action item in November. It's hard to believe we're already going to be in November, but we'll bring a lot of information. But I just really want to thank our community and our staff for the engagement in that process, but also make no bones about it that we recognize how hard this is going to be. And, you know, when we talked to the board last spring about hitting the pause button and coming back to it, you know, we just didn't feel like we could in good conscience make that recommendation. That won't be the case this time, thanks to a lot of good input from various stakeholders in our district. But regardless of what we propose, unfortunately, some of our community may see that as winners and losers. And, you know, at the end of the day, we have to focus on our students being the winners the very best we can. So just more will come on that, but just kind of wanted to give you a brief update of where we are with that. You know, as you know, a lot of the conversations that we are having that challenge us as a school system, challenge school systems all across the nation, and actually globally. I was at an event last week and got to sit with some superintendents from around the country, all in like-sized school districts, and, you know, we started sharing what were the challenges in our district. Guess what? They all lined up exactly the same. And, you know, so I think that, you know, we have programs like our Future Educators Academy, and things we're partnering with our foundation for, and those kinds of things that are really important. But those are things that are going to take a while to yield some results in our system. This week, Tuesday morning, there was a roomful of people here, and so I oftentimes, when there's meetings, just come in and interrupt. And I did that on Tuesday morning, and usually I can tell if it's something I should interrupt or not. So I could tell it was something I could interrupt. And what it was, is a substitute teacher orientation meeting. There were about 45 new substitutes starting Tuesday morning, and I asked three questions. I said, "How many have kids in the district?" And that was probably half the people. "How many of you have worked in the district?" That was probably about half the people. And "How many you live in the district?" And it was almost everyone in the room. So what that tells me is that our community recognizes that our educators and our students have a need across our system, and they're meeting the challenge for us. So the numbers aren't always great, and as I've said many, many times, when your job doesn't fill in your classroom, that's really hard, and it's an impact on the whole school. But I'm so appreciative of our community members, former employees, folks that are coming together to serve our schools in that way, and so clear. So I'm grateful for that, and not all communities are stepping up like our community is. That was actually my point in saying, I met with other superintendents, so. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up in the next few weeks. That's a really important time of year for us. You know, sometimes when your kids are doing well, sometimes it's easy to say, "I'm not going to go. I don't need to do it." But there's nothing that can really replace the authentic conversation between a parent and the teachers that work with their students. So I would just continue to encourage our community to participate in parent-teacher conferences, and know that's coming up. Last two things, I just want to thank the Pioneer Trail team tonight for coming, and so fun to see the things happening in our schools. And I know that's a little bit of a repetitive process, but, you know, I used the word "North Star" earlier, so I'll use it again. You know, the intent really there is to remind us and our public that our North Star really is about what happens in our schools every day. I so appreciate the team from Pioneer Trail doing that tonight. And then also to our special services folks who presented tonight. Obviously, we could spend probably 14 hours talking about special services and all the nuances of it, but I'm really proud of our people. Not that we get it right 100% of the time, but what we do have 100% of the time is people who have a heart and passion for kids who want to do the right thing, and I think that's evident in so much of what they shared tonight. So I just wanted to offer my thanks as well. That's it.
All right. Moving on to 14.01. How much time do you need for the first executive session?
15 minutes? 10? I'm hearing 10. Let's go 10.
10?
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters relating to the security of the board, the school, school buildings or facilities, or the information system of the school, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 9 o'clock?
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Wickliff.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.[338.77]
It's not nine o'clock yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Accept the recommendation for System Security Services is presented?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wickliffe and a second by Mr. Kuhn.
Okay. Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Right, motion passes seven zero. On to action fifteen dot zero one.
Sixteen. No, you're right.
Fifteen.
Six.
It's sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. How do we go from fourteen? Oh, that's post-action. You're right. Sixteen dot zero one.
It's fifteen minutes?
Yes.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine fifteen PM in this room.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
So which was your daughter?
So my daughter was the one.
Move to adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullen, Appeal Hearing Officer, to affirm the decision of the district suspension and expulsion committee concerning the expulsion of student E twenty-three slash twenty-four dash one.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by Mr. Kuhn.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. And we are adjourned.